Meeting for October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. I'm gonna ask everybody to rise for a pledge of flag and after just a moment of meditation for all the victims of the flood in the south.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gee, we can be seated. Thank you for that. I know there's a lot of people from this area that are down there or have family down there right now, and they're going through quite a bit between Florida, the Carolinas, DC, and believe me, we know what they're going through. We've been through it ourselves, so our hearts go out to them and so do our prayers. Okay, so I'm gonna start off. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
On agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Approval for the minutes from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
On agreement?
Aye.
Also, I just wanted to announce, we announced it at the last meeting, but we did have an executive session after that meeting, and I just wanted to bring that up again, and that was to discuss legal matters and personnel issues. Okay, personal appearances and public comments. So we really don't have any public appearances tonight, I don't believe, for professionals coming in. So we're gonna start in the front row here. Gavin, second row.
Tracy Bress.
I'm sorry?
Tracy Bress.
Okay, if you wanna stand up, give us your name and address, and then see.
Tracy Bress, two eighteen Hope Drive, Landon, Pennsylvania.
Okay, and what did you wanna speak about?
The roundabout at CBS.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, I have been on the phone and off the phone with Ray from Pendott in Allentown. He says he has finally agreed that, yes, they own that property. I asked him why nobody's maintaining it. I've come to Chris several times about it. I took pictures of the garbage that's laying out there. Last year, I cleaned up a whole BFI full of garbage with my neighbor who helped me haul it home. Mickey and a few of us walk the neighborhood and clean up. Mickey is dropping what he finds at the yield sign at the CBS roundabout. I don't wanna be maintenance cleanup anymore. It's not my job. I've talked to Chris about it. I asked it to be picked up. Nobody's picked it up yet. My other major complaint is Karen, her husband and I have been maintaining the grass behind our properties up to the swell, and I do half of two twenty-two also. So it's two fourteen, two eighteen, and two twenty-two I'm maintaining, her, husband and I. I don't mind doing that, but I'm not gonna go to the front of the swell and take air bed. This was not a jungle. When I bought my property, there were homes there. We have to maintain our property, so somebody needs to maintain this. I've asked this repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. I gave Chris Ray's number last week. Nobody called Ray. So why am I coming and complaining to the township and nobody doing anything? We are residents, we are taxpayers, we all live in this community, and you all drive down that road and see what's going on. And you wouldn't want it in your backyard, and I don't want it in mine. I was told by Dave, who is in charge of Burks County Pendott area, that he's gonna let it go and let it go back to its natural habitat. I said, well, it wasn't a natural habitat when I moved in here. And Ray was taking care of it for me twice a year, May and September, and now he's slapped this year, 'cause I had surgery last week, and I said to him, can you please get it done by the end of September? Now he claims that they're done with the mowing project for the year. So now nobody's going to cut that grass. It is an eyesore, it's a danger, it's, we can't see over the hill. When you're sitting in the development looking out, you can't see traffic coming. So I am asking you, the township, to either maintain that or get on Pendott's, but to maintain it. They, Ray told me, and I spoke to him yesterday, and I told him I'd give him a call back Friday, 'cause I asked him, I said, did anybody from the Mating Creek Township call you? He said no. Why am I keep complaining for three years, or however long this roundabout's been in, and nobody's done anything? We all live here, right? And you all drive that road, and you all see it. I would like it to be maintained.
Well, I'm gonna start out with this. First of all, it's Pendott's responsibility. We never accept responsibility for that, nor will we, because the liabilities fall back on us then, too. So we're not about to get sued for something Pendott's supposed to be taking care of, and that's exactly what would happen. The same way if one of our people that's out there taking care of it gets hit by a car, the same way with you folks. You get hit by a car, something happens, you know, it's a battling court, and Pendott is supposed to take care of it. And we do contact, we don't, I don't know who Ray is in Allentown.
Ray is the main, he is the main Pendott for apparently Allentown, Burks, the whole area. He maintains everybody. He is over Dave in Burks County, or Matt, whatever his name is.
The person we contact is at Burks County, because that's our local contact.
That's not getting you anywhere.
Well.
And he's already clarified that. Ray is in charge of him. Ray gets people out here to do the job. Now Karen said, like, three, four weeks ago, somebody was out, and they told her they were from New Jersey. So I approached Ray about this, like, three weeks ago, right after it happened. Was it about three?
Yeah, it was about three.
And he said to Karen, Karen went up and asked him, you know, is he gonna cut this? And he said, you tell him. He said he would do.
He said he was hired by Pendott, and he's from New Jersey. Unfortunately, I never asked him the name of his company. He said he would take care of it. This was about five o'clock in the evening, and I had taken pictures that he was there. He never finished it. He did one swipe, I mean, one pathway on both intersections, that was the end of it. He said somebody else was coming to finish it. Nobody ever came back. And if my backyard looked like that, I would get a citation. So it just doesn't make sense that Pendott isn't responsible. And when they first made the roundabout, I spoke to Pendott, and they said that they would make sure that it's nice, because it's residential. Nobody ever came back.
And then when I spoke to Ray, Ray said he has no idea who these people are from Jersey that came out. And Ray also.
What's Ray's last name? Do you know?
Um, yes, I do. And I gave Chris that phone number, too.
Well, 'cause, and to Dave's point, I don't wanna cut you off either, but I made a few phone calls myself, and they brought this up, the guy that I spoke to's management level, and they brought this up in a manager's meeting, and what he was telling me is there's multiple locations on seventy-eight, eighty-one that the state has done this type of planning with. It's some kind of grass they put in here for erosion or whatever, and they have, like, I don't even know, botanist or whatever, that look into this and make sure that, you know, it gets mowed on a certain time schedule, and there's all these requirements, whatever. I couldn't care less, really, is what I basically said.
Yeah.
It needs to get mowed. So they, the state, are looking at purchasing a mower to kinda, I don't know, it's a special mower to get in there to take care of it. Now, I did see that John Deere that was, you're talking about, is a John Deere tractor, like big red mower in the back?
Yes.
Yeah. I had heard, whoever, that they broke down. That's why it stopped getting cut. So I'm, again, I'm getting, what I'm thinking is happening here is this, the runaround from the state.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, Dave had said, we, we have, we have, I personally made that phone call to them, to the people that I know.
Yeah, I've talked to him at least ten times.
I don't even know who Ray is.
I'll give you his right here.
District five, I believe.
But here's his name.
District five, I believe.
Yeah.
Monac.
B O R O N Y A K.
And he also told me, I said, well, if the township agrees to do it, he said, we'd pay them. He's like, it's not out of the question, it's not like you guys can't do it.
It's not a fortune, Tracy. Greenwich does it, they pay three thousand dollars a year, but you have to mow all the street roads, and that's a lot in this township.
No, no, they, well, I talked to him, that's not what he told me. He said that if you guys wanted to do it, if you would come to, he would do it legally. They would do the paperwork and do it the proper way.
It's an agility agreement. Other townships do it.
I mean, I don't really care, but like, hey, if they own it, let's get them to do it. He also told me that it's the residents' responsibility to mow the, or plow the sidewalks. I said, wait a minute, none of us residents live on those sidewalks. There's the homeowner on two twenty-two has a little bit of the sidewalk out front, but other than that, that's all Pendott. That's not mine, that's not, it's nobody's responsibility.
It's Pendott's responsibility, because they own the land.
Exactly.
And to say that is gonna go back to nature, natural, whatever. If there was houses there, they bulldozed to put that in, so.
Exactly. And here's the other thing, too, I'll sit back down and tell you this, but, you know, during that big flood in July, I did a seven-mile walk that next day, and I toured all of the areas over there. Do you know that there was not a drop of water in that basin that they put in back there? So what's the point to these things? If that was flat, I'd cut the grass right up to the sidewalk. I'm not climbing down a hole, I shouldn't say that, 'cause her husband and I have to cut down until he needs a chainsaw. Oh, nice. So we can't cut them when they're little, we'll just wait till we need a chainsaw to do it. The guy's an idiot, and I can't think of his name, it's, well, I might even have his. Oh, yes, it's Matt from Temple, and if you'd like his number, I can give you that.
We have his number.
Well, I sat down with Bruce Bubser, who's in charge of the Temple Maintenance District, and his story when I sat down with him was Pendott has all these basins maintained. To meet the MS four requirements, they had to put special soils in, they can't put heavy equipment in there, so they have hired four people to go from one end of the county to the other, and everything will get cut about one time in a season.
Well, they haven't cut at all.
And I told him, I said, Bruce, that's really just not good enough in our commercial district. That's where we left the meeting. Josh, you made a few phone calls.
So I also left a note, 'cause I'm, there was a, and I don't think, she's not here to talk about it, but there was an incident that was near there, and it actually transpired into the, one of the basins that was over there. So that was my phone call then to Pendott, was like, we have an issue here, we had a criminal issue going on, they arrested the guy in the, in the ditch, in the pond, and, you know, for all we know, he could've been laying there in tall grass and got away. You know, luckily, it was, it happened that we got the guy, but at the end of the day, it's a safety thing, you know, it's a safety thing for people driving by, it's a safety thing for, for that, you don't know. You, people might be walking across the CBS, next thing they're getting mowed because somebody's hiding in the grass, you don't, you don't know.
That's the back of my yard.
Right, right. So, and this is why I reached out to them directly, to those contacts that I had, and that's what I was told, that, you know, they're, A, they're getting a mower for multiple sections of Burks County to take care of it, see, it gets passed around, which is fine, but we need to be on this cycle to get this cut. And then that's what I was told, well, it's a special grass they put in there, and it only gets mowed so many times a year because of Bruce.
And there's no grass, it's all weeds. It's weeds. I have rocks, I have weeds.
I know, I've been in it.
We have, and just so you know, too, 'cause I guess the guy next door in the border department's in charge of this, we are getting another sinkhole, just so that's, that's a fact. It's right at the corner of Karen's property and mine, right at my fence, where we've had several issues now. And him next door, whatever his name is, I can't think of right now, Pat, came out and addressed that.
Do you wanna get in contact with Dave Maloney's office, see if he can help us with Pendott? Because we're, we aren't getting anywhere. We're trying, it's not, nothing's changed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do my best, and I told him, listen, I'm only gonna live for five or six more years, deal with me, but let's take care of it. After I'm gone, I don't care what happens.
And the problem with Pendott is they're trying to farm everything out to third-party. The, you know, Pendott doesn't wanna take the responsibilities that they're required to take now. I mean, that's why we have the roundabouts we have, because otherwise it would be our responsibility, and they asked us to take that, and, and the board of supervisors that was here at that time, as well as the one when we started, and at the end, said, no, we're not taking that responsibility because of the liabilities, because of the harmful traffic problems that we're gonna face. You know, Pendott has trucks all over the place. They can bring arrow trucks in and, and protect their guys, you know, we don't have all that stuff.
Pendott can easily contract it out just as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, it, all I'm asking is that, can we please do something? And I told him, too, I said, there is a fire hydrant out there, which up to about a week ago was buried. He did have somebody come out and spray, and I could see that they did spray a little bit, but just because we maintain three-quarters of, more than three-quarters, I retain, I maintain myself in back of that swell, doesn't mean that he can't spray the weeds there. I've asked him that, too, can you spray the weed? I don't have grass, I have weeds.
Right.
And I mean, I'm out there, I spend about an hour and a cap, an hour and a half every week cutting grass with my edger. I went out last year in September, I think it was, after they sent somebody out to cut that grass, and they only, they said they can only go like eight inches high or something, he told me, or sixty. I took my walk behind out there, and I'm cutting it, and then there was a telephone pole there, and I got whatever wire it was in my lawnmower, I thought, I'm done before I kill myself cleaning up. We have, I took a bunch of pictures, I can show you, there's weeds growing over the sidewalks at this point.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna say this one more time, I am asking that somebody go out there tomorrow right at the yield sign and pick up the garbage, because if it's not picked up by the weekend, I'm gonna pick it up and I'm gonna bring it over here.
Not ours.
I know, but who's gonna do it? There's a gas, let me tell you, there is a gas pump out, there is a hose with a nozzle to a gas pump out there.
Triggers.
I'm not kidding you. And, and Mickey's picking up this garbage when he finds it, one of the residents, and that's very nice of him, but stop putting it right there, leave it where you find it. Let the resident of the homeowner that lives here clean it up.
Yeah.
I'm not going to keep cleaning everything up. There is like a forty or fifty-pound piece of, like, rubber that I told Ray about, I mean, I could hardly lift the thing. I left it there from last year, it's still sitting there.
And you're getting the same response that we get.
Yeah.
And, and.
So what do we do?
Where do we sit in this, this realm of everything? We're down here just the same way you are. You have as much authority with Pendott as we do.
They don't listen to us.
Yeah, they don't listen to anybody. They're their own entity, they do what they wanna do, and they've been doing it for years.
Do you have any suggestions on who else we can go to?
Dave Maloney as a representative from Holy, he's our local representative, you know, so if you may, we've done this, we've made contact with Pendott, and we follow the channels that we're supposed to follow. The district five offices have the engineers and things like that. I don't know who this guy is that you're talking about.
Ray is over, Ray, this guy is over Burks County. He's over Matt.
Well, there's a lot of people that are over Burks County, but what is he over then with? Is he over them as part of their engineering district? Is he over them as part of their maintenance district?
I can't remember, because he did pull all the paperwork, 'cause he kept trying to tell me that it was still really Mating Creek Township. I said, no, 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 we cleared that up last year, that just belongs to Pendott.
Yeah. So they're not even recognizing that it's there.
I mean, I've talked to this guy at least ten times, I don't even know why he answers my calls, because if I were him, I wouldn't even wanna talk to me, because I'm getting nasty, you know what I mean?
If only Pendott had monthly meetings, you know?
What's that?
If only Pendott had monthly meetings.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, it just needs to be addressed.
And we will, we will make some phone calls, I'll make a phone call.
I just literally texted the guys we're talking to, and I said that if someone needs to clean up trash at CBS roundabout, that goes in the Mating Creek Estates development, I said that you're at this meeting bringing it up to us, so.
I, I told him, I would be calling him tomorrow with the results.
The guy from Reading, or the guy from?
I don't talk to that idiot from Reading. If you can't talk to Ray, there's no sense in talking to anybody.
No.
But.
It's almost like you need to talk to the governor.
What's that?
You might get somewhere talking to the governor.
I'll try and call Ray myself.
Now, could somebody please come out and pick up that garbage? 'Cause if not, I would bring it over here.
We can't.
We don't have anybody, nobody, there's nobody here tomorrow.
They work four-ten.
Yeah, they're on four-ten.
So they're off tomorrow.
And don't bring it here, it's, it's not township trash.
It's, it's like, I don't know, any township doesn't go up and down the road to nowhere cleaning up trash, 'cause it's not their responsibility.
What am I gonna do with it? Let it there?
Mm-hmm, hope Pendott picks it up. We'll address that as well, 'cause he just did, he texted the Pendott people, and they do work tomorrow.
Josh, I have pictures of all that, if you're texting that guy, is that his cell phone number?
It's, it's his personal number, I know him, he's actually a resident here, works for Pendott, but I know him.
Okay. I have, I will, after meeting, I will give you, text you, and I will send you pictures of the garbage.
I seen it, I drove by the motorcycle, and I see Atlanta, in fact, that's all the pot you're talking about, 'cause I, it stood out, it's all there in one spot, so, but, yeah, so.
I mean, last year it was twice as big, and I brought all kinds of stuff home. I'm not gonna keep, I'm not, I'm not getting paid for this.
No, you're right.
It's not my job.
You're right, it's Pendott's.
And the only reason we take care of the grass is because they told us that they would not do it. So then I said to Karen, well, they're not gonna do it, so I guess if we don't want groundhogs and weeds growing up our fence, then we need to do it, and that's what I did. So I do my property, she does hers, and I do half of my neighbors'.
Well, we can discuss how we can go from that, but I, we've got some property maintenance codes that we can follow and.
I did send a letter.
I even told her I maintain the trees out back if they planted, that I don't leave them alone.
I'm gonna, I will call this Ray tomorrow.
So you're saying legally, this township cannot send anything to the state enforcing her complaint?
Yes, that's what, well, we're not saying we can't force it.
Yes, you can, you can cite, you can send a citation, 'cause we did that with Pendott on the property.
I didn't say we couldn't.
At seventy-three and Park Road, when we were, prior to purchasing of that property, we cited that for property maintenance issues.
Yes.
And then I contacted Senator Arnold's office, who was our state senator at the time, and staffing from his office got involved in a number of the issues, so this township does have standing. When a township representative contacts a state senator or state representative, they then can act on our behalf and contact Pendott, and that will move Pendott along. And Senator Gethard, who is now our current state senator, is, has been responsive, he's got a whole staff, when he gets in mouth, they're gonna listen to him. So to sit here and say, you guys can't do anything, or our residents should clean things up, is not right.
I think what we said was.
We didn't say residents should clean something, when did we say that?
We said we can't clean it up.
You said, well, initially you said you couldn't do anything, but you can slate them, and there's no reason why we should have residents of this township mowing, weed whacking, and cleaning up.
I agree, we're a hundred percent correct.
Absolutely.
We're all in agreement with that.
No, but you need to take action here and go higher and go to this, I would recommend the state senator's office, Gethard's, go specifically, and have them get involved to act on behalf, there's no excuse for this not being taken here.
I agree.
So we'll, we'll address it with, you're gonna call.
Yeah.
And then, do we wanna make contact with Gethard's office?
Oh, I'll call him.
Okay.
So do you need me to call Dave Maloney or let it go?
Well, more people.
More people.
Yeah.
I would call him. More people calling.
The better you are.
Absolutely.
You get your neighbors are calling, too.
It's just that we won't pick up the, the garbage, and we won't maintain it, because they have a contract, which they signed with us, saying they would.
If one of our guys were to get hurt, you don't even wanna know the legal ramifications. Why was he, the worker's attorney, why was he doing that? Is that his responsibility? No. Is it your responsibility? No. Why would he do it? Pendott wasn't doing it, so we sent our guys. That worker will own us.
Look at how long it took them just to clean under this bridge down here, on seventy-three.
We offered to do it and have them pay us, they said no.
No? And they're still not done with it. So you see the, the problem we run into, we have dead ends all over the place.
Well, let me ask you this, if you file a citation with them, then they're gonna have to respond to a citation legally, correct?
Yeah, they do. So when you make the citation out to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, it's not gonna go real far, I'll tell you that much right now, because it's a, it's a summary citation, so it's gonna die along the way. Now, maybe it'll get somebody's attention, but there's no guarantee to that.
But if you don't file it.
You never know.
Then you don't bring any attention, so.
Well, that's why we tried filing it.
To get their attention.
Like I said, we've, we've been in contact with Pendott, we've sent letters to Pendott about various things.
I think the attention's there, they're, they're fully aware of it, it's, the runaround you get, one of the excuses was that, that I've heard was staffing, the other one was the equipment that they didn't have, so.
I'm not disputing anything you're saying at all.
Yeah, we're almost at the mercy.
Right, right.
The residents, as this woman said here, is being burdened because Pendott's lack of responsibility. You guys now move forward with this, understandable, but still it comes down to one thing, and you said something, Mr. Beck, about safety, right, criminal activity, what's going on? You got insects, ticks, you name it, rodents, that could possibly now infiltrate an area because of Pendott's lack of.
Responsibility.
I'm gonna say this, as this woman said, idiots, 'cause they are, but that doesn't mean that we should have to turn around and not, we should keep bringing it to their attention.
If we don't do something that Pendott tells us to do, they're on our backs, they're climbing down our throats. But if they don't do what we ask them to do, it's like, well, we're bigger than you.
For, for instance, this is, I'm not sidetracking this conversation, but this is another, Pendott kinda has us up against the wall, graffiti bridge. So when they were out here doing this bridge down here, I said, hey, while you're out here, 'cause my contact that I have, I'm friends with him, he stopped by, and I said, he was checking on how the job was going, and I said, while you're here, can you swing by and look at graffiti bridge? Said, we got trees growing in graffiti bridge, can you take a look at it? So they looked at it, they came back, yep, there's a definite problem here, we're not gonna maintain it, 'cause it's not gonna be a usable road, so we're, we're, we're washing our hands of it. I said, it's your road, you're not washing your hands of nothing. Somebody gets hurt on there, that's on you, 'cause they wanna, they wanna pawn it off to us. So I said, well, can't we block it, fence it, whatever? And they said, yeah, we'll give you permission to do that. And talking with legal, it was like, well, we probably shouldn't do that, because if somebody swings around that fence and falls and injures themselves or kills themselves, now we're getting sued, because we put that fence there. So, you know, the best thing to do for graffiti bridges, implode it, drop it, get rid of it, but they don't wanna do that either. The, the best thing for, to, to, to do is let it there and let Mother Nature take it back over. It's crazy, absolutely crazy.
It's gonna fall in on the town.
It would, but it's gonna take somebody to be on that bridge to get hurt, to sue the state, until that comes down. It, it's just.
I agree with you, I've seen the paperwork, I've looked through some of the paperwork here, I've seen the paperwork on exactly what you're talking about. The state does not wanna take responsibility, but to your point, somebody's under that bridge, a piece of concrete turns around and crushes that child, then they got the lawsuit. It's no different with, even out here with this road, out here two twenty-two with the speeding aspect, right? I understand, so, but if you don't legally send them something, then they can't keep their attention and bring awareness. And then again, if the people need to call, well, I've been on the phone with Dave Maloney, I know who sent him this, too, get on the phone, they don't like the phone calls, I can tell you that, as you know. They do not wanna hear from residents, because then they have to do their job. I don't care whether they're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, you need to hold them accountable, and if they don't, they go on in every way and just do what they want, because again, I agree with them, the state overrides municipalities, and it's wrong.
Well, I will call him tomorrow, Dave Maloney.
And what we'll do is we'll put a letter together.
It'll be his first call of the day. I'm not gonna drop it.
We'll put a letter together again as well, we've written letters before, and this time we'll go to our state representatives as well, saying that, hey, listen, we've, we've tried the route of Pendott, and it just doesn't seem to work, so, you know, we're gonna lay it your lap and see where it goes. We've got complaints, there's safety issues, and, you know, the site, the site angles are gonna be detrimental to safety for the highway itself. So if they want their roundabouts to work, they gotta maintain the surroundings to them as well. So we can do that. Can we guarantee results? I can't guarantee anything there, 'cause it's in somebody else's hands, but we will, we will send them letters.
Unfortunately, it's most likely, and again, like you said, you can't guarantee it, but they'll probably come out and clean up that trash, for sure, that's probably something they'll come and get, you know, but as far as mowing, I don't think you're gonna see that till next spring.
Yeah.
It's, it's winter, and that, basically, in their eyes, they're, they're shifted to.
Yeah, that's what they told me, they told me they're away now.
Yeah, they're getting filed out now.
But it's all a problem, and it's, and it's making this area, these people keep their area clean, everybody keeps their area clean, it's making the township itself look that it's not being maintained.
Well, here's the other problem, if they have this as a third-party contract out, did we pay that third party?
We gotta go to Jersey, get somebody to cut the grass?
No, 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 I'm just saying, if, if they paid them to do the job, and they didn't do it.
Exactly, that's what I said, they're right, I said, Ray, how many thousands of dollars did you pay somebody from Jersey to do the, he says, I didn't pay anybody, I go, well, somebody paid the guy, because he said he was from Jersey.
Yeah.
So I saw it, too, like, I saw the tracker sitting there, 'cause I, I think it was going to a meeting, and I saw it, I guess they were mowing, yeah, they were coming here last month.
Yeah, they got a flat trailer, one side of the road.
Yeah.
So somebody's paying them, they're not just doing it in the places they are.
Yeah, I don't know.
And it's Pendott that's paying them, so if they're paying the bill.
I mean, it really needs to be taken care of this year, we got, got that lawnmower back out there. I asked him to have it done by the end of September. I said, you have till the end of September to get it done.
Well, your ultimatum didn't make him do anything.
He told me he was going to, and he didn't.
Yeah, exactly.
So he did, he did do it in May, and, you know, he did it the last two years. At least, here's what I think, I think it was Pendott, it could've been that guy in the red truck, who was that, JK, whoever the heck it was. Who was that, J K, whoever the heck it was, the red trucks.
JD Ekman.
That was doing all the, the work. It wasn't PennDOT, it was the, the guys in the red trucks.
And I don't know what contracts they have with people.
They think, Ray thinks that it might be under contract with that company yet, I can't think of the name of that red truck.
JD Ekman.
Who is it?
JD Ekman, that's who he worked for.
That's who they think possibly had somebody come out from Jersey, because they said it could be part of their contract yet.
Steve.
Some of us hope.
It's like nobody seems to know.
Should be done with the contract issues.
But still, the state should know, they, I mean.
Well, they didn't know that they own property, so.
Duly noted.
He was trying to tell me that two twenty-two owns part of that vacant land there, between the swell and that house, I said, absolutely not. The people that owned that land was the house on the corner that was so dilapidated, because the gentleman, her ex-husband, used to come and cut the grass. I've watched it for almost thirty years. He doesn't even have the right notes that he's looking at, there's no big maple out there, the maple that was there was in my neighbor's backyard, but I'm glad it's gone. That's my property, not two twenty-two.
Well, let's see what we can do, we can't promise, but we will work on it.
I'll try and be patient.
Thank you.
That's not gonna be easy.
Anybody else? Is there anybody else in the next aisle?
Fifth final load, Chalmfield Road, it's two eighty-four West Longstreet Yard. Now, I'm not gonna be as patient as this lady. We've had eight ordinance put into place for jake breaks in this township. We were told thirty days had to go out, I believe two meetings ago, Mr. Frank, you said that the police report said they were giving out citations and warnings, correct?
They started, they had to start with warnings for the first thirty days.
Alright, at this point, warning time should be over.
It is.
And Police Chief's not here, so I can't ask him a question, but.
There have been citations issued.
With fines.
Yes.
Okay, next thing, uh, PennDOT had a meeting, Police Chief stated that PennDOT gave them a grant to put an additional officer on two twenty-two. I see they bought a new one to cover pickup truck. At what level are we gonna wait for them to start giving citations out at two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning, on Monday through Sunday? Or are we gonna still continue now that we went and got the ordinance put in, that these people on two twenty-two have to listen to this noise every single day? There needs to be a response.
There, there are citations, there are citations that have been issued, there are hearings that are scheduled for some of those citations that I'm aware of right now. Now, we can't have an officer here all the time, and that grant that PennDOT's talking about, they've got two different grants that they offer for traffic enforcement. One is Smooth Operator, okay, and that's a, an enforcement grant that they use for, for speed and, and traffic enforcement, and they've got Buckle Up Grant. They come at different times of the year, it's not like, we'll give you an officer, we want him out here forty hours a week, they don't do that.
Well, here with the Chief of Police said, he stated that it was gonna be strictly for up to twenty-two now, by half, they'll get the minutes.
Well, no, no, I'm not saying it's not for two twenty-two, it is for two twenty-two, but it doesn't pay a forty-hour-a-week officer. What it does is the grant to supplement, so they get paid overtime and come in and do the traffic enforcement.
Okay, so, we're giving citations out, what time of the day, in the daytime or in the evening, because obviously it hasn't done nothing at this point. So the next thing I'm gonna go through, my understanding is, from paperwork I have, which I don't have in front of me, Maiden Creek pays fifty percent of the police funding and budget for Northern Burks, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, with that being said, uh, on the line, he has now turned around, put a warehouse in, they're building another manufacturing company over here, there's numerous industrialists on in sixty-one. Maybe it's time for On The Line to up their ante, put a police department, and we can hire another two, not one, two, to start turning around and get additional police into Maiden Creek and On The Line, alright, so somewhere along the line, the problem has to be solved, we have the ordinance. I understand the mountain enforcement, if you don't have the personnel, I got that, but it's time to act on it now, not wait, like this, this young woman is saying about cutting, that grass has been out of control for two years or more, and you can't tell me legally that this township in some way cannot go after the state. I don't defy it, I'm not acting, returning myself, this township needs to start holding the state responsible for their responsibilities. And the same thing with this jake break, or jake break ordinance, it needs to stop, thank you.
Okay, with regard to the jake break ordinance, they are citing Trucks Board, we're past the thirty-day cycle of, of whatever, uh, giving the warnings. The jake break, the officer has to hear it, just the same way he has to see the speeding vehicle, or the vehicle running the stop sign. Uh, our department is a very busy department, I think they're up forty percent from the calls from last year. So, you know, I, I'll give you last week as a perfect example, let's look at last, last Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. You had an incident with, uh, with the police, a, a presence at the school because a student showed up with a weapon, okay? That takes time, all our, all our resources are going to that, all our resources are going to the domestic that happens, or the crash that happens, because you have to. You know, if you're directing traffic, you gotta, you gotta block till a lot of fire police show up, and things like that. So, that takes a unified effort, but we can't say, okay, bring another officer in, because these guys are all on a call. The officers are scheduled for their shifts, so they come in, they work their shifts, they sign up for overtime to do the traffic details, when the traffic details are, are allowed. They're not allowed all the time, they give certain sanctioned times that they run these details. I did it myself, I ran Smooth Operator, I ran Computer Ticket, and, and I had four twenty-two going down toward King of Russia. And, and I would work it, but I might only work a four-hour detail, or maybe six hours, but that's all they give you for a period of time. So you might run four, six-hour details, and that's all the money you got, they give you a certain amount of money to utilize for these details. It would be nice if they said, well, here's an officer, and for forty hours a week, you can go ahead and use that officer on, on traffic details. One of the other roads that they use is two twenty-two down here on the bypass, because of the amount of crashes, sixty-one is another one that's a, a detailed road. So, you gotta use within a certain distance off that road, and you can do it for trucks, or cars, or whatever you're, you're doing for, for traffic enforcement. But when you're on that one traffic stop, and that truck goes by with the air, with the jake brakes, you can't leave the car you stopped with, you know, and there's not always another car right around the corner. So, those are the problems we deal with, they've gotta be seen by the officer in order for the officer to testify in court. He's gotta be able to say, yep, I heard it, I'm, I'm issuing the citation to this driver, the court gets the citation, they determine the fine, somebody asks for a hearing. Uh, they go to the hearing, they testify based on the ordinance, the judge makes a decision, and, you know, if they're found guilty, they still have the right to appeal again to County Police Court in, in Burks County. So, the appellate rights keep going up and up and up, and then that officer who's in court is not on the street either. Just the same way as all these, these heavy-duty calls that they're getting right now, the, the school incidents, the domestics, the, the robberies, the burglaries, and things like that that they go to. Once they prosecute somebody, they gotta have all those officers go to court, and they're getting paid overtime to do it, but that's time that, uh, they're not on the street, or whatever. So I just want everybody to understand that it's, it's, uh, it's a difficult situation, and there's no way that we're gonna be able to go in and say, oh, listen, I, I'd like to have fifty officers for Maiden Creek Township, we can't afford that, there's no way we can afford that. It just, it just doesn't make sense, so we, we try to deal with what we can, we have enforcement on two twenty-two, there are citations being issued, and the guys are sitting where they can.
Well, they just, just took a truck out of service that I know of anyway, they took a truck out of service, so the guy was non-CDL, so, and I think that's what triggered it, was jake break, pull over, and then it turned out the guy was a non-CDL, the CDL driver was taking his break in the passenger seat when he got pulled over.
Now, we have several residents here who live near the roundabout, I know when the ordinance first was enacted, people were like, oh my gosh, it's so much better, it's fantastic. Is it got, does it go back, or is it still pretty, is it still improved, or has it gotten worse again?
Traffic wise.
No, jake break wise.
Oh, jake.
Well, the noise is unbelievable, seven days a week, you can turn around at any given time.
That's not what I ask, I, has it, to those who live near the roundabout, has it gotten worse?
Well, I live across the mile away, and I'm gonna address your question.
I live the same, same distance as you.
I live right back in the roundabout.
I know.
And I actually have to say, so if they're not in, I don't hear it, and it's, you know what I'm saying?
Not being smart, I'm just saying, I know people were like, people were reporting the ordinance, now has it gone right back to the way it was, that's, that's all I'm asking.
It's awful, that's why we wanna move, we're only moving because of that, really.
And I'm not disputing anything you said, Mr. Frank, because I know, I, my son's in law enforcement.
Yes, he is.
You already know that, but my point is simple, if you don't look, you save revenue, if you don't look at your revenue, I understand two feet, two bodies, alright, that's it. You're two feet, two arms, he can only be there, I agree with a hundred percent, but if you're not looking at increasing the protection and the law enforcement, because again, it's not any doing of this two twenty-two corridor here, it goes back to the county level, and I got all paperwork on that. The bottom line is, the protection of the community now is being put at risk because of this. So, you want us to discuss something in the executive meeting, discuss the fact that On The Line's got extra income, they need to put their fair share in? Let's get, not one, two more offices, so you can do something. The other thing is, as you know, in law enforcement, they do sting operations. So put together six offices on any given night, on a heavy night, go out there and hammer every single trucker. Look, I love truckers, but when they're coming through with the jake brakes, and they come down this hill, heading this way into Reading, across the field where I live, and I'm pretty far away, it echoes across that field right into my backyard.
I agree.
If, if they do something, they put it together, put a sting out there, you know, they can, the word gets on the radio, hey, use your, do not use your jake brakes in Maiden Creek. Something has to be done to apply, to make it back to a residential, a quality life, quality way of life, that's the.
Well, we, we put the signs up, we're doing the enforcement, two twenty-two is a US highway, uh, so it's under the federal highway system. And, and they fought us just to put the jake break ordinance in, they didn't wanna do that, and there's, they didn't give us the whole length that we wanted, because there's a slight grade at the one end, that slight grade shouldn't mean a thing, you drove truck, your brakes on your truck, stop your truck. You don't need a jake brake to stop the truck, I don't care what anybody says, and the jake brakes that are out there, the guys are, are taking their exhaust systems, they're removing the mufflers, so they can hear the, the stuff that rattles your windows. It's not about, this is safety.
Cars do that.
Yeah, they've got an empty tractor trailer, and they're jaking it, you know, there's no reason for that, there's no reason at all, and the jake itself can be quiet. It can be an engine retarder, you know, it can be a transmission retarder, a lot of the trucks today are automatics, so that wouldn't be difficult at all either. But in all reality, if, if PennDOT's saying, well, there's a problem, these guys might not be able to stop, well, that means we, all, all the trucks that are out there without jake brakes, you gotta take them off the highway. Does that make sense? No, at all, so it's not PennDOT, it's PennDOT's arguing. And we, we're dealing with that, and it comes right back full circle to what we just talked about.
Well, to your point, it's a place and time to use a jake brake.
Absolutely.
If you're coming in, and again, I have driven through a truck, you come into a residential neighborhood, come on, as you stated, that trailer, that tractor is made to stop the load, and it's eighty thousand pounds, it's designed for the brake system to stop the load.
Absolutely.
So these people, to me, are doing it on purpose.
Absolutely, I'm not gonna argue.
If they don't learn the lesson by getting a fine, five hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna continue it.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying anything negative against any three of you, I'm simply saying that somewhere, it has to be held accountable, if these people get the message, that those signs hanging out on the side of the road that says no jake retarders are serious.
Yes, and the chief's just as serious about it as every one of us.
Yeah, and the, and the, which officer it is, is a way, they're weighing in everything else too.
Yeah, we've got an officer that's a weighmaster, we actually have two.
Delman was in, um, he's looking for a place to do the traffic.
To pull him into.
On two twenty-two.
And that's a problem too.
Yeah, they're, they got contact information for the people that own that Dollar Creek.
Yeah, 'cause I did, I, I saw him pull him out, but I don't know that he actually weighed the guy that pulled him over because of being right in front of renters. But I did, I chuckled to myself when I saw the scales come out, because I thought, oh, this guy's getting hammered, but I, I honestly think too, and, and like I said, it, it, it will go across the radio real fast, real, real soon, but I think it, it really only has been probably, I don't know, twenty, yeah, thirty days maybe, that we finally are able to find them now. So I, I, I believe that it's gonna start traveling a lot, where once more and more, we'll start getting it, so.
Yeah, so they're gonna take their actions.
Because I agree, I hear it in my house too, you know, and Sunday mornings, sometimes you hear it, it's like, really, it's, you know, six o'clock on a Sunday morning, you hear them coming out.
Oh, it's silly, yeah, it's like, Sunday morning, they start, because they're doing their Monday travel into Allentown or, or the Jersey, whatever, and they come through there, and they have no reason whatsoever.
I really think the ones that are.
And, and it's, because there's no traffic going in there, so.
Right, oh, in the cruise, in the cruise, and then all of a sudden, go, it's a circle.
Well, the other problem is, the signs are in one language, so there are a lot of drivers that only speak.
I did also bring it up to my PennDOT friend, and I said, we put them per the drawings you were getting, that we were given.
Right.
And I agree that when you approach that from the cemetery side, because I just came out past, um, there's a moorage, and turned there, and I did look at it, you, you barely see it.
There's a lot of signs.
And, I mean, I, I would say that if it was, if it was up towards the roundabout more, you would notice it.
Well, it's even the signs that you have up, when you come into the roundabout, that the signs aren't as reflective as they. I mean, you have a hard time seeing them, and we've addressed that as well. So, we address a lot of issues with PennDOT that just evaporate into the brains of PennDOT's management.
So, follow-up question, so can you ask our police commission department to actually do enforcement from the two AM to six AM time period on certain days where the quality of life issue is probably the greatest issue, so that people are not woke? Because our, like, Josh, like, sometimes I hear trucks do, there's times with depending on weather conditions, you can hear the jake brake.
It's only gonna get worse when the weather believes it all.
Well, yeah, yeah, and the dependence of weather conditions and everything like that, so the enforcement issue can happen other times, but the most critical time, the people that, most people are sleeping, is gonna be after the night to say six in the morning, five in the morning, so if the Northern Burks Police Department can actually enforce during those times, that would be the most beneficial.
So you're saying between two AM and six AM, is that Mr. Wries?
Absolutely, I know this is the most time between.
I'll bring it up to it, we have a meeting Monday night, uh, I'll talk to the chief.
I believe we have two officers on duty, I believe, I'm not sure, we have, I think we have two officers on duty overnight, and the other, the other guys have, like, one at least for one on one.
I mean, if you hit them hard for a week, it, they will get out over the radio system, and they will back walk down, they're not gonna want five hundred thousand dollar fine, and they're not gonna want to show up in court because it's taking money out of their body.
I'm just curious, on your behalf, maybe, um, is this something like, you know, we sent out the mailers for all the residences, like, is this something, we can send out a mailer, just the postcard mailer to, like, your businesses, like, Lehigh Cement, Giorgio?
But you know, they're not the ones that are dealing with it.
They're not, but I, like, hey.
It's, it's the guys with the triaxals, it's the guys coming out of state, coming through.
And it truly, that's a.
There's a few people in this township that drive truck and say, huh, I'm gonna run my jake no matter what, and let's, let's see what happens, you know? Listen, you drove truck, I, I drove truck too, through my whole career as a police officer, and, and I drove for Allentown Cement, so our loads were heavy. You know, you're running eighty thousand pounds, we didn't have any jake brakes, you just use your common sense, and you gear down. I mean, you gotta stay within the limits of the truck, and if you can't drive within the limits of your truck, you shouldn't be driving, you're just a steering wheel holder. So what you gotta do is, the company's gotta be responsible too, and hire drivers, right now, they're having a hard time keeping employees everywhere. So you're, you're getting a bunch of knucklehead monkeys out there that just go down the road, you know, you can't, I mean, what are you gonna do? You're gonna, you're gonna find them, they drive when they don't have a license, okay? And we, there's no, like, neon sign above them saying, I have no license, so you gotta wait till you stop them, and, and that's when you find that out, and, you know, it becomes another mess there, so, yeah. So, you gotta wait till you stop them and, and that's when you find that out and, you know, it becomes another mess there, so, yeah. I mean, we, I will talk to them about enforcement. And, and they are enforcing, and some of those are at night because every one of us hears the jakes. So, what do you do? You know, you, that driver is pulled over with one officer? I mean, maybe what we want to do is, is ask the chief to, to offer overtime for our highway for a week, and then we'll just suck up the overtime, but that's over and above in our budget. You know, that, that comes out of your tax dollars.
Money will spend.
Well, we can do that. I mean, the, the potential, the potential is there. If, if we ask them to, I'm sure they'll, they'll find some guys to run it, or maybe two or three days a week.
Look, I called the state already, the Barracks up there in Hamburg, and they're no different than PennDOT.
Oh, yeah.
The guys have
Well, they don't even cover down here.
So on, so on, and they said, look, sir, I'd like to take a complaint, but the bottom line is, because Northern Burks Regional is in your area, we are out of responsibility. They will back up if there's a situation. But other than that, this load has been thrown in and said, hey, you need to take care of it.
And, and that's, that's what they do. Now, Hamburg doesn't cover this section, this is out of Reading.
Right.
Like Ken Harsh Boulevard, Truval.
Yep.
So, and, and those guys are busy too. So, you gotta figure, if they're at a call out in Bethel, and they get a call to Hereford because there's one car with two troopers, or maybe two cars with two troopers, um, and they're both running that call hot because it's domestic or a shooting or something like that, they don't have time for enforcement, they're just trying to get their calls done. And it happens. I can tell you, well, you know it happens. So, we'll deal with what we can, we'll bring it up, and we'll see what we can do. We'll discuss how we want to handle it from the avenue of, of, um, deployment of officers and see what can be done. But we have to fall within the parameters of the contract and things like that too. So, we, we will address it with the police commission.
We appreciate that. Um, I did a question about the C2 zoning ordinance. There was, um, an effort or some review to remove warehousing from the C2 zoning ordinance. What is the status of that?
So, Pamela and I actually just spoke of that before the meeting tonight. Um, Soler kinda jumped ahead of that one. Um, we discussed it and we're, we're gonna look at that for as the next one we're reviewing.
So, it's currently under review by SDE?
In, in my office, both. Yeah, we have some notes that we took, and we had some preliminary drafts and stuff, so we're gonna take a look at that.
And then you're gonna submit to the board of supervisors to start the process of having
Probably has to go to planning commission first, let them, that's, that's normally where the ordinances go through, and then it comes up to the supervisors afterward.
Right, and the board of supervisors, you refer it to, you're talking about the township planning commission, right?
Correct, yes. And then, so, they write it, they bring it up to us, they approve it, then it goes through the cycle to the county.
So, then what would be early scheme with this would ever be adopted?
Next year.
Well, I know, it'd be next year, it's early after her. Because I think it's an important issue with the township, but I think there's people that don't have these
About six months. About six months is what we're looking at.
Six months, okay.
Roughly, depending on certain those things along the way.
Well, it should be pretty straightforward, I mean, it's basically taking out the, you know, the allowance, the allowed, um, construction of warehousing, or warehouses in the C2 zoning. This is allowed in the industrial, so, you've already got placement township where warehouses are approved, so it's not an issue of finding another place for it.
Yeah, so we're, it, it's in our radar, it really is. Okay, nobody else? Okay, well, let's, there's not gonna be a police report tonight because the police commission has not met yet, it's gonna meet Monday night. So, our report will be approved after our meeting and, and I'll have it for you, well, chief will have it for you for next month. Okay, engineering and zoning.
Go ahead. Uh, you have in the report the subdivision status checklist, as you know. It was quiet at the planning commission meeting, we're hoping, since it was canceled, maybe the November meeting, there'll be plans resubmitted for review. So, again, we'll keep you updated through that subdivision checklist. Uh, next, moving on to, um, the village of Maiden Creek. Thank you, Jack, for being here tonight. We had met out there, there were some issues with lack of communication between, uh, the HOA manager, nothing with the board. It was the HO manager did not advise the township, nor our office that they were proposing to do significant work out there in the basin. Uh, the significant work they were proposing totally conflicted the plans that were approved. So, we met in the field, had some angst of discussions yesterday, met in the field today. We think we have everybody on, on the same page to move forward with a, um, process to fix what they destroyed out there, especially the emergency spillway. And they've restored the basin bottom, it looks great. The, uh, riprap, riprap aprons at the two discharge points look great. Uh, and they're just going to put a new, uh, trash rack on the outlet structure. So, all in all, once they fix the emergency spillway, what they've done is pretty much complete. So, we're, we're certain that moving forward, it's going to be, um, I'll say function in the way that it was, that actually approved that in 2015.
Who's the contractor?
Uh, contractor's M and A, Andy Barton, and then it's, um, Falcon Engineering. But unfortunately, the HOA manager did not contact us and, and I guess assume that the contractor and or design engineer were going to reach out. But fortunately, the adjacent neighbor called the end who called us, and we were able to, and we mentioned, and make this now fixed. So, we just wanna keep you up to speed, Jack, if you have anything else to add.
No, you're pretty well covered.
So, again, sometimes the, you know, cooperation in the field is where it happens, so I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Salt shed project, I think that's back in your report, or am I discussing authorization?
It's been ordered, and unless Josh has something that we need to authorize about, but you need to
I already did that.
Yeah, I don't think so. I can give an update on it though, for residents if they want. So, um, we're talking about the salt shed that we, uh, approved the other meeting. Earthwork has started already, road crew's been up there excavating and getting that prepped and ready, and they're doing a good job at it. I think you guys are to the point where, are you digging trenches next week?
Next week starts there.
So, next week, the foundations are getting dug, or getting prepped, you know, digging out, excavated, and, uh, we're about ready to start hauling stone and so, we wanna be, we wanna have all of our ducks in a row, so that when the supplier, the vendor says, hey, we're ready to come in, 'cause they're, they're putting it up, and we wanna be ready to go. There you go, I bet. So, we're well underway.
I will have the asphalt down before they shut the plant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, glancing through my report, it's very quiet, there were really no action items except the resolution.
Yeah, and that's later in the business.
That's later, okay. Well, then I'm gonna jump right to cornerstone bridge, a replacement, which is the main reason that I brought Grant Stoll, uh, our EIT from SDE. And he has plans to present to the supervisors on the arch, it would be a contact arch bridge replacement to replace the dual, uh, metal flow channel, I'll call it, metal channels culvert thingy that's out there right now. So, Grant, it's all yours.
So, like Pamela said, what's existing right now is two, uh, thirteen foot wide by about three foot high. That design, it's probably less than that now from the bridge sinking. That they frequently get clogged, um, blocked with debris all the time. So, after doing some, um, investigations with a few different kind of bridges, we have come up with a, a contact aluminum box culvert. It'll be just about the same footprint of the existing culverts are now. They're a forty foot by twenty, um, twenty foot wide span. And actually, we would, um, modify the bottom of the stream a little bit to maintain a consistent flow channel, um, from the upstream and downstream sections, so that there's no, no more widening or shrinking, it's, it's all consistent in the water can flow. So, there are gonna be some, um, modifications to the existing road, uh, because we are going to maintain now a, I'm gonna throw the road profile. The culvert, in the culvert itself, we're going to have, uh, maintain a four foot clear opening. So, that's gonna result in, in approximate, um, two and a half foot raise to the road. But we are, um, uh, adjusting the road grades to minimize any major changes in grade. The most that we have is a three percent change. Um, and that's, um, on the, the western side of, um, the bridge. But that's to maintain the already existing low spot. That's for the storm sewers, it's just been shifted, um, to the west a little bit. It's now gonna, it's two, two storm sewers going across the road, um, which also contributed to the scouring of that whole area on the downstream side. It's gonna be, um, a small storm pipe, it's gonna go right through, we, um, make talk of contact, see if they can do an opening in the wing walls for the storm sewer, so it'll dump right out on the protection, um, scour protection that'll be already installed with the bridge as well. And then the upstream side is gonna be, uh, curb cut to a swale that'll go down to the other side of this upstream side of the stream.
So, you're not running a pipe on the road?
Correct. No storm pipe anywhere. The other complex would be utilities.
Yeah. There's horizontal, vertical exaggeration here before you even say it.
Yes, it's a, um, it's a
Because the bridge does not look like that, nor does the hull.
Ten time vertical exaggeration. So, and then this is what the profile of the culvert would look like. So, we are gonna have, um, approximately nine foot wing walls, um, or head wall and end wall. For that reason, we are proposing guide rail as well. Um, so we gotta grow, um, on all four corners of the bridge. And then, um
There's none there now, right?
There's a
Uh, there's a, there's a small
It's not a guide rail.
It's not really a bridge either.
But, um, yeah.
Is roadway itself gonna be wider?
No, we're gonna maintain the existing fourteen foot lanes.
Okay.
Uh, and then install back the, um, concrete rolled curb. So, we're, we're keep, try to keep it, uh, the percentage of it is just higher. We do have questions for contact as we're going through the design, and I did, um, have on my list to ask them if we can reduce the amount of cover, maybe getting a thicker, um, thicker gauge plate for the, the culvert. Maybe we can reduce some of the structural backfill they require before we can put a road section on top of that. Because right now, they require a two point four feet of cover before we can set any road installation, uh, road stone base either on top of that.
For the gauge that's being inspected right now. You also have the park driveway and the park walking path that you want to show them, and you
Yes.
Put the blend in.
So, since we have the, the guide rail, we are gonna relocate the park path and then a few of the signs there, um, so they're not conflicting with the guide rail. But, um, so we have path, it's gonna be, originally came through here, it's gonna be shifted about thirty feet, um, to the, to the west now. There'll be a few modifications to, it's just one driveway. Uh, we weren't able to avoid not modifying it, just from the way the road grades are. It would've made too much of a speed hub, and it just wasn't, uh, it wasn't worth it for, to try to not adjust minor driveways. Yeah.
Of course, you have your foundation report, which we briefly discussed before the meeting started, so
Yeah.
Um, additional questions, your review of it, if we can continue to have a dialogue with content about that, so. There's pros and cons to each kind of power sources this front foundation, um, we just had not so close in experiences.
Even the, even the depth of it is what it is. My concern comes into the de-ordering, the cofferdam, the rerouting, like, we've all been there, there's not enough room for that. I mean, I, I just, I'd like to see some other alternatives if we can avoid that.
Yeah. Especially with utilities being there. I mean, a six foot foundation is not good for anything.
You're in that gas line, for sure, 'cause there's a gas line that goes under there.
Yeah, actually, um, from what we were
Is that one, they died if that guy was
I think we were showing, even with their minimum
Yeah.
Two and a half foot footer, we're going right through, that's actually the water and gas. We are, we, uh, we'll have to coordinate with
Sure.
You know, Water Authority, UGI, Comcast, 'cause they have their telephone lines, electric lines, all surrounding the bridge well. So, once we can get a better foundation design from contact, finalize any comments or changes that you have to plan now, um, and then get our submission DEP ready, we're gonna hope to be ready by December second, um, to start our final coordination and permitting.
And then also, at the same time, submit to the utilities and let them know that we need their feedback.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because this is critical.
When, when do you think we'll hear from the jury?
Uh, March. Since we're modifying that one driveway, can we run the electric line to Cornerstone Park so that we can put a light in?
Absolutely.
Because that area is very dark.
Yeah, absolutely. Now's the time to do it, you're right.
Since it's open.
Right there at the driveway and the path area?
I think that would be the best place. It is where three developments meet. We could never get the electric to that location.
Okay.
And that ripping up some of the driveways.
So, you said March 2025 is when you think you're gonna hear?
Yeah, according to, we, we actually have a, an grant analyst who contacted us, so that's what you say.
Wow.
So, by that time, we should know, then we can, once we know, we can order the bridge?
Once we know, we can order the bridge, yes.
Can you guys be done by March?
Well, uh, preliminary.
That's not what I asked.
We know DEP. Change any and I can, I mean.
Yeah, I like, I think it's good, um.
We're gonna have a whole lot of problems with DEP? I don't know that we should.
We're improving what's there currently, we're just having to make sure that they understand that.
And a lot of their, a lot of their comments in the past have been changes to the stream width.
Right.
So, that's why we're trying to maintain as much as we can and do a little bit of raising on the sides to maintain a six foot channel.
And if anything, we're improving the quality of the stream by removing potential for debris and trash, and it gets, that gets hung up in there.
And it passes more than a hundred year event.
Yes, yeah, right now, the current bridge, um, cannot pass the, this culvert's cannot pass a twenty nine year storm. With this new, um, aluminum box culvert, we have the, it can pass up to the two hundred year storm.
Okay, so that was the big part of our
Yeah, was good.
Analysis report tonight, we were very excited, especially with the grant submission, so.
If there's no hiccups, everything goes nice and smooth, how long would that be closed?
Be installed?
The traffic?
That's all.
I would, I would say a few months, maybe.
Yeah.
Because they, they're gonna have to put cofferdams to block the stream and bypass it around. That's just gonna be DEP record.
So, they'll, they'll block one side, put a foundation, and do whatever they need to on that side? Because the context's gonna be complete span, so it's gonna be whatever they got, need to get that prepped, put the wing walls in and whatever, and then flip-flop it to the other side, pour that foundation, do that side, you know. So, yeah, if we, if we get everything released, we, look, I don't know, maybe we get started next July. It depends on how much rain they get, what the weather's, you know, you know, I, I, but I think that road there, it'll probably be down three, four months, I would say. That's if everything goes smoothly.
Right.
The setup for the kind of thing.
That's what I heard. It'll be painted in. So we got a week?
They they set it in, hold it together and pour the concrete on, whatever they gotta do, it'll all figure out. Are you putting it, there's no concrete on, this is all just like.
Yeah, it's just a metal, it's just concrete foundation.
Do they, so they poured the foundations in, they fastened it to it, they poured anything on on the sides of that too?
Yeah, there's, there's a channel in the foundation that the the bridge will sit in.
Correct, another core pump, where they just fasten it through.
I think they just fasten.
Okay, yeah, some sometimes they pour catwalk, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think they pour. That's not, that's not the, what the contact plans showed. They just.
Yeah.
Job.
It'll be, we better.
Like in the red, you're saying.
Basically, that's the way it's going, yeah.
Pretty much did something similar. They didn't do the road, changes to the road. Uh, took them six weeks.
Yeah.
Um, days on the bridge one side before they got into the stream, because they had a really small window to get in the stream.
Not limitations, okay.
Yeah, and we might have some too.
It could be a potential, but I mean, it's not a huge bridge. So it might be less than that, I don't know. A lot of contributing factors.
I steer the time a lot.
And it's playing in the right direction, and that's what we're excited about, yeah. Okay, so if you have any other questions, once you look at plans and the foundation report, can you please, we'll get in touch with Grant and let me.
We can send over the P E Fs as well if anybody else wants to just look on the computer.
I think they said they're not fall asleep.
No, it's not. I'll take a look at that. I was.
I think they delegated.
Yeah, I'm also a lot too concerned about it. It looks good.
I don't go there.
So we don't need to get that. I'll review.
I'm still looking forward to the other details.
Yeah.
Yes, by.
Yeah, if I say anything, I'll like, I'll like.
And you want an alternate, uh, have him talk to, and Kina is the contact that we have, talk to her about different foundations, so.
I would, yeah, I just, yeah, there's a lot of contributing factors.
Well, with those utilities, it's just scary, yeah.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for um this day's report tonight.
Move on to the solicitor's report?
So the the sole ordinance in your package, you know, whatever wants to be counted.
Uh, last week, I believe, when you sent it to me, the data.
We should have enough time today. They have to approve for thirty days, so we'll probably, I'll do the math.
Well, I I told her, you know, learn next meeting, whether she said she'd try.
Okay. So um, so we'll get the advertisement and get it in. We'll be front of that. And then um, an update on the warehouse uh application. The uh, the deal has been withdrawn. So that case is over now and essentially the township's decisions on both the land development and the zoning uh control at this point. So that case is over.
So they received their outside agency permits, uh, with the exception of authority. They're still working with three individuals with the authority.
So they got penned out. I knew penned out was coming, so. They have our agreements. Everything's been agreed upon formwards, but obviously they haven't signed those. Once they get ready, they'll sign and post the development escrow once, so they're ready to go forward. That's it.
Okay. Public Works. Nothing? Park and Rec, you ready?
The only thing I have is we have the flea market on Saturday.
Yeah, you are. I don't know, they're in their friend of his town, right?
We'll get back.
Yeah, going back to Public Works. Okay, we have consideration of purchase using bond for the Simex cold planer for the skid loader. For forty thousand ninety five dollars.
So this would be instead of looking at the asphalt zipper, which was like two hundred and sixty grand?
At least.
For the zipper. Zipper's a neat technology. It uh, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a good machine. It does a lot of good work. The guys rented this, was it the same, same planer or?
Forty inch yet.
What's that?
The forty inch yet.
Yeah, so they've they've rented it, tried it out and on the skid loader and it. Honestly, it does what we need. And if they have to make two passes instead of one, so be it. It's two hundred and ten thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars cheaper.
Oh, that's good.
So.
Did everything you can for the mom, right?
Now that we got our own skid loader that is more than capable of running it, it just kinda makes sense to, you know, we're doing this road work. And it kinda makes sense to have something on hand that you don't have to go pick up every time you wanna use it. Next, the reason that I had, it got brought up and I told Keith, originally we weren't planning on talking about it till next year. But the prices are going up. They've already told us that they're going to increase their rate for next year already. So um, it just kinda made sense to add it into it and go from there. So that's, I think, in a nutshell, is about it, right? This is a forty inch.
Forty inch yet.
So it's exactly the same.
Okay, any questions? Okay, do I have motion to purchase the Simex cold planer for the skid loader for forty thousand ninety five dollars?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Authorization to paint roadlines through Berks County Cooperative Purchasing Council, uh, the contract not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. I have motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
That needs to happen sooner than later, because when we were there today, I mean.
I'm trying.
People just.
I'm trying.
You'd think that they figured, you could, you could clearly see where they paved two lanes. And people drive here and then run the other person off the road, almost hit a mailbox, and I'm standing there, what happened? And I'm like. Like, there's no line, so I must get the whole road.
They did, they did a really nice job.
It's, it's.
Yeah. And and I keep hoping that somebody comes up with something that's gonna be reflective.
They do, they have.
Ooh.
Well, I know, but reflective enough to.
No, they, they definitely do. Like I said, I I, when we were at Ole, I mean, what's that thing called? The thing where you're sat at Thursday.
The rodeo, the.
Well, there's a.
Yeah, the rodeo, the fair?
Yeah, no, that's like a public.
Right.
Public Works trade show.
Public Works trade show.
Oh.
So I had gone with the guys and um, it, we were talking to the guy that does this, and we brought that up, said, you know, this, this, they're reflecting this. Around Berks County, hence any period songs. And I had said when I had to do work in California, it's amazing. You drive at night and the roads are illuminated. And it's not because they put glow in the dark stuff in there. It's the glass bead, I guess. I don't know, but it's so reflective. Uh, it jumps out at you. I just don't know why we, intensely, can't do this. I agree with you.
Do you have an answer or?
No, he just basically said that they crushed the glass and put it in there. We said, why can't we get bigger? You know, change your your grading system for your size of beanie and make it bigger.
That's what it falls back to a pen dot spec.
You're exactly right. That's exactly what he told us. This is the pen dot spec. Here you go. That's exactly what he said.
Over in Australia, they're demonstrating reflective lime green lines that you can see at night. They almost light up like there's a light bulb in them.
It was crazy. I was not, I was working in Silicon Valley, but you're driving down the road and the street lights, as you approach them, they get bright. And as your car passes, they dim back out. They don't go ow, but they dim back down.
Oh.
It was, it was pretty interesting.
I follow you.
You having trouble with my driver?
The rest of the state's garbage.
Well, when there's no lines, it's really difficult to join.
In the rain, in the rain, it's impossible. I think there was just an article somewhere about that. Was it in the Ready E or somewhere? I just read an article about driving in the rain and how bad it is in our highways in Pennsylvania, and it is.
Yeah, there we make a motion for that.
So I'll, I'll make the motion when we authorize the pain road lines through Berks County Cooperative Purchasing, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's nothing else on the third agenda?
Hey, you people would get your stuff in any by Friday. There would be a second agenda.
You voted yes three times to do it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, come on now. I did, I did. Yes, Pamela, let's get surprised.
Okay, Aaron Rodgers, Park and Rec.
All right. The only thing I have is we have the flea market on Saturday, the fifth. I believe we had generated a little over four hundred dollars uh in funds to support the Parks Department. We had about twenty-ish spots taken up and um, it was pretty busy all day. It coincided with the Limestone Village, Park Place, Golda Manor and Bay Creek Ridge yard sale. So I think that really helped along with Fall Fest down Fleetwood, so. Uh, it's pretty busy. Um, we did over a hundred dollars at the uh concession stand. And that was all product donated from neither myself, Nancy, Rodney and and Pat Deming. But it was all a success. I talked to the people that did sign up and spent money to pay for the spots. They said they'd do it again. So next year, we're gonna look at holding two of those that also coincide with the yard sales in April and September.
And does everybody have to wear a recolor, or you know?
We did.
I I'm gonna say something.
We were safe.
Yeah, I'm gonna say something because we had National Night Out also. And our park and rec was there with that, making street tacos that were fabulous. What is it, walking?
Walking taco.
Well, I had to stand still eat mine, so I wasn't walking. Uh, but they were fantastic. Great idea. I went home and tried them at home and it worked well. So.
And I also wanna piggyback that, thank you guys for, because there's a lot of times that we.
Yes.
Were standing there. I've been to them before, where we're standing there and involved, talking to people, so. And this honestly allowed us to kinda mingle around and talk to people too, because a lot of people did go up to me and been talking.
Yeah.
I knew, so, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
It worked out tremendously. Um, a lot of people were there. We got done just in time for the rain. And uh, and it worked out real well, so for everybody who came and supported us, everybody who was a business that supported us, thank you. For our parking rec that was out there doing the food for us, thank you. And for everybody that showed up, thank you. I appreciate it.
Also made about three hundred and fifty walking tacos.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
So did you have to get feed for all those tacos? Because they had to walk, did they have two feet?
Did she actually run out?
No, we ended up running, we ran out of crock pots, so we had to heat more product ready to rush it, so. Next year, we'll definitely look at having, if we're doing the same amount, we probably need about six crock pots. That'll have all the meat heated at once, and then we don't have to worry about.
Generator, generator in the microwave.
Yeah, or I'll just bring my flat top and have it ready next time, because that, that worked for the hot dogs, so.
I've got a, I've got a heater unit with trays that you could use to.
No, I wanna see the black stuff coming out of the bocce hat.
Well, that was at the other end.
I know.
And that's a problem. Okay, so thank you, one and all. And thank you, chief, for having your crew there as well. Okay, manager.
Okay, uh, as Pamela said, we submitted the LSA grant for the Cornerstone Drive Bridge. Um, the joint comprehensive plan meeting, just a reminder for Eric, Gavin and Jim. October twenty second, six o'clock at the Richmond Township building. Patrick, that'll be the first meeting.
Yeah.
The authorities has parted ways with Ray Palumbo, and they're in search of another manager. So Patrick has had his arm twisted and he will remain manager for a little while longer. Uh, let's see, there's no update on the breaching of the G A R S war, but maybe in the next two months we'll see something. Well, we received our NPDS permit and went through the thirty day comment period. There were none, so that's official now. And the MS board report was submitted by S D E for us. We finally closed out the recycling grant uh for the Trump Off Center. And I did contact Jane Meeks. Uh, Josh gave me a, what is it, Josh?
It's a piece of machinery for, it's a J C B. Um, and we're looking at going, we were talking to the vendor out at uh P SAT. And uh, we also had to come and bring the machine here and try it out. It's a J C B machine that would be um a grapple, and they were looking at a a mower.
A mower.
And is that it? We're looking at maybe a grinder, right?
Yeah, and then you also have the bucket on it.
Yeah, it comes with a bucket. Um, the nice thing about this machine, we've, we've looked at other mowing machines that are more exclusive to just mowing and stuff like that. This one here has, is, is a very versatile machine. Um, so when we were talking to the guy that brought it out here, he said a lot of municipalities, boroughs are doing this through the recycling grant. And I said, can we do that? He, he said, sure you can if you're, you know, gonna use it for that. So it'd be perfect for our situation with a grapple. We can pick it up and load our bins and stuff up there. But uh, we can also use it for our brush pickup and stuff like that, because it's a, it's a tired machine. Um, it's a wheeled machine and uh, it fits in in the lane and travel, so you don't have to have a chase car. You don't have to do. You know, one person go down the road and off and go, you know, two people dump trucking and go. Uh, so anyhow, instead of us paying two hundred and some thousand dollars for the machine. I'd rather see if we can get a grant for it and I think covered ninety percent.
Ninety percent if it was used a hundred percent for recycling, because we're gonna get that mower attachment. We'll have to talk to them. We had a pre meeting with DEP. That'll be in March. I did contact Jane Meeks and let her know that we want um to get into the grant cycle. Because she generally lets us get in the grant cycle every other year, and we didn't have anything this year, so.
Okay.
We'll see what we can work out with with the DEP.
So it would be nice to, you know, and that's part of the reason why we decided to go with the skid loader. It's a cheaper alternative to purchase, because if the state will help pay this with the grant, then I'd rather go that route with the grant, so.
And then I began working on the budget. It's on your agenda later that we have to schedule a budget meeting, but I really can't do anything until I have a police budget. And that's the big item.
We have two, we have two days.
They're working, so. We'll do that. And today I met with Tom and we started working on the revisions to the street sidewalks and curb ordinance. And we'll meet with the road crew when the weather gets nastier uh to talk about the personalism regulations. They're pretty busy right now. I don't wanna pull them away from what they have to do. That's all I have.
Okay.
What was Mascaro's response to the no ninety five gallon things?
Okay.
I had a choice.
Yeah, no harm, no foul, but but he drove us.
Old business. I don't love that we have anything under old business.
Don't have anything for you.
New business. And to accept the resignation of Earl Weber effective October second, two thousand twenty four for personal reasons.
I'll make the motion that we accept the Earl's resignation effective October second.
I'll second that.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. We'll do that regretfully and please send a letter to him, but uh, we appreciate his service to us and. Okay, we need to adopt resolution twenty four twenty four, pointing into additional S E L. And.
The new S E L is Kevin Byer at our office.
Okay. So we're just gonna add to that list that we already have.
Correct.
Um, our primary is Scott McCaffrey, alternate Nick Volk, uh Shannon Petrillo, Tom Unger, Keyshawn Walter, and now Kevin Byer. So do I have a motion to change our list and add the name Kevin Byer?
I'll make the motion that we amend our resolution twenty four dash twenty twenty four to include Kevin Byer.
I'll second that.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Okay, schedule a budget meeting. Uh, I guess we're almost uh.
Just a little hurt back from police.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you know, the two dates that?
Yeah, well, there's more than two, but.
Yeah, there's, there was two dates that were, that seemed to be the most agreeable, but.
Right now, we're looking at.
People that we didn't hear from.
Correct. Right now, we're looking at October twenty third and November sixth.
Uh, well, then there's no real point in doing that, um, because you meet the fourteenth.
Right.
Um, if we advertise on the fifteenth, you would just have to have a year end meeting probably instead of. Because you you won't have enough time for your December meeting to adopt, and you have to, I'm pretty sure we will be too close.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, we can have a year end meeting, that's fine, but we really need the police numbers. We can't.
Yeah, we can't do anything without them. Okay, so we'll. We'll move that to next month. And schedule a holiday lunch for the volunteers and staff for December twentieth.
And we've contacted with the caterer Food Lee out of Pittsburgh, Kylie Reddick.
Food Lee, Ali, or Ali?
L I T H.
Oh, okay. I guess there we go. Okay. And that, that we don't really need. All right, now, page two is the big one. We should only be here another four hours. Um, motion to approve the bills and accept the trade report is presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's one thing that I wanna read here, I've got a letter, and, and I'm just gonna read it, and, um, and we'll see where it goes from there. I would like to take a few minutes to try to clear up some information being spread throughout our community regarding our E M S services. The Northern Berks E M S is a medical response service we, as the board of supervisors, chose and continues to support as medical responders in Bay Creek Township. The service was regionalized a number of years ago in response to financial issues and some other internal issues that we addressed. Our ambulance organization services a number of municipalities out of two stations, one is in Blandon, uh, at the fire company complex, the other at Leesport, next to the Leesport Fire Company. Some complaints about neighboring ambulances handling calls in our community have been circulating and indicated our E M S responder was unable to handle calls. There is a shortage of E M S providers statewide, and if there are any totally volunteer services remaining in the state, they have not been seen here for quite some time. Now, after saying that, I will add that the pay of our responders is very low. Fifteen dollars an hour for E M Ts and twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour for the medics. The training and equipment necessary for handling calls is very strenuous and costly, and each call that requires a response does not always require a bill, yet the gas and wear and tear in the equipment doesn't evaporate because there was no reimbursement. Insurance companies have ignored bills, and if they do respond and a bill is, let's say, eight hundred dollars, insurance companies feel that they can force acceptance of ninety dollar reimbursements. Now, if I tried to do that with their insurance bills, I would face rejection of coverage, but we are forced to accept their decreased amounts, costing E M S services to suffer. Many communities do not either fund or efficiently fund E M S and fire services, yet expect gold star service, this is closing the closing of many services. There are studies and investigations which have been researching the problem in hope of resolving the deficit that is faced. Now, our service covers a large area, and some days, there aren't enough ambulances to respond if a bad day occurs, but that being said, First County has what is called a mutual aid agreement, in which an ambulance will respond from somewhere, and that means we cover for others, and someone covers for us. That happens in all emergency services, we mostly see this in police when backup officers assist, and in fire services when more than one fire company responds to a call to assist. Either with manpower, water, air services, to name a few, the E M S world also does the same, and there is seamless coverage that may take a few minutes longer to arrive. Reality is, nobody schedules an emergency, so planning is not even predictable. Now, to cut to the chase, some think that there is an unlimited bank account to provide, and the reality is, the amount of people knocking down the doors to join and out are fleeting. So we handle with what we have, and we face the burnout of responders, we try to help, but most work countless hours in multiple agencies to make ends meet. The task force is working on what will help, but it will take money and people, the ability to recruit large amounts of people and train them is also an issue, as people have to appear first. Some think that the neighboring agencies don't face the same issues, but every Berks County squad has the same issues. Now, if anyone is interested, our E M S asks you to come forward, and others seek that as well. The reason, and, and so do our fire companies, just to add, the reason for addressing these issues is to let our residents know that if something happens, either our ambulance will be responding, or a mutual aid E M S unit will arrive. In Pennsylvania, all E M Ts are trained and take a test for their abilities and skills, and if on another call, or as an example, if all our ambulance units are busy, another will come. Nobody of reasonable mind has difficulty with understanding the dilemma, but some choose to spread concern and fear where it is not necessary. Please feel free to ask about the issues, and we will check and address if there is a legitimate concern. We hope that the spread of false information will stop, and concerns brought to our attention will be met with an answer of satisfaction. There is a study being done on E M S services, which should be rendered soon, and we will use the results of this study to determine if there is anything that we should be doing to improve E M S services in our township. And I know there's discussion about certain costs, uh, that has not been released yet, I was to a meeting in the city of Reading not long ago, uh, E M S is having a problem statewide, they're having a problem nationwide. Um, and we've got to address it at some point, so we also have to realize that if, if we only have four, maybe five ambulances, uh, we only have maybe two at a time that are available. And we're, you know, putting people into those ambulances, so our ambulances are going to other areas all the time, you know, and if Hamburg gets, gets called to Bethel, then our ambulance is the closest one to go to Hamburg, and then Muhlenberg will come to us, and then Reading will go to Muhlenberg. And that's how it works throughout the whole area, it's a mutual aid agreement that the county of Berks put together many, 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 many years ago, and it works for fire, it works for police, and it's working for E M S. We just don't wanna, I, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of talk in the community that we're not supplying services, we are. We have named Northern Berks Regional E M S as our ambulance supplier, they are doing the job, they're getting out to calls, uh, it's not like we are out of service, it's not, they're somewhere. Uh, and they jockey around as they need to in a management level, so the police department is the staging area, if our ambulance is out, they stage at the police department, so they're as close here as they are over to the other side of the area. If, if their ambulance is out, ours goes to the police department and stages, and that's just something that the management of Northern Berks E M S felt was necessary to be able to keep everything going. We have paid crews, we do, we're having problems with E M Ts coming in and paramedics, so if anybody is interested, they're looking for people to join, there's a lot of training involved, you're gonna go through training as an E M T before you can even consider a paramedic. But the training's there, and so for the paramedic, once you, once you do it for a while as an E M T, you can move on to paramedic. Uh, and hopefully, as the state addresses the issues, um, through the new V M S commissioner, uh, they will be able to handle a lot more, but they've gotta pass laws that make it reasonable too. Why can, why can an insurance company turn down a bill, if you go to the car dealership and, and they fix your car for eight hundred, you don't get to just write them a check for four hundred, you don't get your car back. So why do the insurance companies get this, the fire company the same way, I mean, this is ridiculous, these are services that are providing for our lives, our safety, and our protection, police, fire, and E M S. They're, they're what we're gonna look for in a time of emergency, I give you the floods down south, who are all there waiting to respond? Those three, and emergency management, not necessarily FEMA, not necessarily Pima, but the local emergency management agencies. Those are the people in the communities that are there for every one of us, and that's what we need to keep in mind, and if you can help at all, sure would benefit. Our, our, you, you can't volunteer for the police department, but our fire and E M S sure could use people no matter what. If you, if you don't wanna respond to calls, there are other facets as well, you know, so, so keep it in mind, and if you have any questions about the service provided, call us, what we weren't happy to find out and answer for you. Any question? Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
You adjourn?
You adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second. All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
We are gonna have a, uh, an executive session after our meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight.